They need to go out, they need to be back at a certain time. CCS or CCA provides those transport services for us. If somebody has to be brought back at the last minute because the defense attorney and the DEA have worked out a deal, or this person is in there for something, the only reason they're in custody is because they haven't been able to make the bond. Now, all of a sudden, the bond money comes through and it's outside of the normal transport times, we send deputies up there to pick them up. Go ahead, you can talk.
Sorry.
I'm tired of talking.
Oh, alrighty. One of the things, sir, that I wanted you to keep in mind also is that 2013, we were probably $49.12, I believe was our overall average, at each of the fireout facilities we utilized. You know, the fireout facilities operate just like any other retail business. They look at supply and demand. Right now, we're using CCA. They gave us a very good rate to work with. We've been able to negotiate good rates with other fireout facilities. But CCA, six years ago, when we were at our peak times on fireouts and we were farming out more people than we had before, the same bed that I'm getting for $49.12 on average today was going to cost me $87. So, you have to keep in mind that when you're figuring in, "Well, golly gee, if it costs us here and it costs that there, let's just send them all out for 50." I can guarantee you, it won't be 50. Because they respond to supply and demand. CCA has a limited capacity. They have significant contracts and significant revenue that's guaranteed through the U.S. Marshals program, through the federal government. They pay a much higher daily rate per diem than we do. Many of the fireout facilities, some of which you could say we were responsible for shutting down. When we were able to bring in more staff and bring back some of our folks from fireout facilities, two of them went out of business. So, again, we cannot rely on that $49, $50 figure when we're doing strategic planning for what if we just dumped about 250 people? CCA can't take 250 people right now, number one. Number two, there will be someone to come in and take them that they're sure not going to let us pay them $50 a day for.
No, that's, and that's a, it's, that's why I said it's counterintuitive. Because it seems like, gosh, if it's half the cost, just farm out more people, right? But it's more complicated than that.
Significantly.
A lot. In 2009, when we moved 109 inmates from Bethany, Missouri to CCA, we paid $58 a day for those beds. Those same beds that they had previously quoted were $87 a day for. So, their fixed costs remain constant as well. If for some reason the marshals aren't housing as many there, they still have to maintain a workforce and a staff or whatever in the event that comes back up. Ergo, they'd rather, they'd rather get $50 a day from us guaranteed over time, and we guarantee to keep 75 inmates a day there in order to get that rate. Okay? And so, it's a negotiation and a business arrangement. And so, just like our fixed costs remain what they are, their fixed costs remain what they are, and the supply and demand dictates what rate you actually end up getting.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? I'm happy to sit down.
Commissioners, just wanted to let you know, if you go to your email account, you could pull up this PowerPoint. Now, we just sent it out to you so you can follow along on your screen, and you'll have it right there for your ability to go back and reference some of the numbers such Sheriff or the other departments will go through, so.
Sheriff, thank you very much. Great presentation.
Sure.
Great solutions for us to take a look at.
Commissioner Murghia.
Sheriff, I just have one quick question.
Yes.
Do you, do sheriff departments ever hire part-time deputies?
Yes, many of them do. And Mr. Bach and I have had a conversation about this, you know, about this issue as I think it's doable. We also would have to be mindful of the, you know, how the, how the union might take that and feel about, feel about that.
The union doesn't like part-time people?
Well, they may, you know, but they may not. They may say, "You're, you're now cutting into opportunity for our full-time, you know, employees, our regular employees," you know, "to have the ability to, for example, work out of grade or..."
Well, I'm not suggesting everybody's part-time.
Sure.
I'm just saying there'd be a small number of part-time that could give you some flexibility from a management perspective.
Yes.
Like, maybe there'd be a cap on the part-time.
Yes, no, I, I think it could be effective, and we've looked at it. We've talked with, you know, our union folks a little bit. I think as long as we were pretty thoughtful and deliberate and sort of...
Yeah.
You know, we just stuck our foot in the water first to see what kind of relief it does provide and how efficient and effective it is before we, you know, did a great big thing. I think it's prudent.
Well, I think you're, as always, I say this every time you present, you give a fantastic presentation. It's easy to follow. Even though I'm not a sheriff, it's easy to figure out what you're doing. It's very transparent, very open. The general public should be able to understand it. I appreciate that. I was just curious if there was a reason, because public safety, what I've noticed over the years is that it requires a lot of flexibility. I mean, because I'm sure, as much as it looks like you could get rich off overtime, I'm sure that there are officers that have to work overtime that really don't want to do it.
That's right, yeah.
Yeah.
We, we offer overtime first voluntarily, and almost on a daily basis, we end up forcing somebody in order to meet minimum staffing, and so...
That's why I thought it could be a good compromise for both the employee. I don't know what that number is. I'm not going to, you know, get into that level of detail, but there might be a good compromise for us and you as a manager, as well as the union. Just a comment.
Well, thank you, and I want to take this opportunity to thank my staff, the senior commanders seated here tonight, as well as Linda, Michelle Nicholson, who really got in the weeds with this stuff, along with UG, other UG staff, like Reggie and Lou, Ron Green, some of the girls in the Public Safety Business Office were very helpful and responsive in helping us, you know, cull through this data and determine which would be meaningful for you. So, I appreciate all of that assistance. All right.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
We, we're ready for another presentation. I think we're going to take a five-minute break, a five-minute recess, come back, we'll start the next presentation. One of the things, looking at our agenda tonight, we want to get a full present, I don't want to shortchange any of the presentations, I want to make sure we have the comprehensive look at this. So, in the event that we do not, I'm anticipating we'll probably just get through fire before the 7 o'clock, that we would stay in chamber after our 7:00 meeting, which has the potential to be a very short meeting. And I just want to invite that opportunity. Since it's all on consent calendar, it has the potential to be a very short meeting, that we could come back and do police after our 7:00, whether it's at 7:15 or 7:30. So, we will anticipate that. We will not shortchange any of the, any of the, or rush any of these presentations. So, we're going to take a five-minute recess, and then we will be right back to start up with the fire department. We'll call this meeting back to order. All right. Administrator Bach, if you want to lead this off?
All right. Thank you very much, Mayor. Sheriff, great job. I think we'll just go straight into the fire department presentation and recognize Chief Jones to come up and lead us through the presentation for that part of it.
All right. Good evening. And I guess what I'll do, I'll start with this, this first slide. And the fire department being a 24/7 operation, and what it takes to run a 24/7 fire service operation in Kansas City, Kansas, and this is, represents the on-duty daily minimum. Need 100 personnel on duty per day, and we have three shifts to accomplish that. And you take a snapshot of just the one shift, and this represents all three, but you have to have an operations chief on duty. And that operations chief basically runs the shift, the entire city, for that, for that 24-hour period. And then you have two battalion chiefs that are out there to respond in district, and a battalion chief fire investigator who also can cover some of the duties as far as if you have multiple fires going on at the same time, or multiple arms, heavy rescue, et cetera. Now, as far as pumper companies that you need to provide for this operation, we have 14 pumper companies. Actually, we have 15, but 14 of those, you have to have staff with a minimum of three personnel. And that represents 42 personnel on the pumper companies, those 14. Now, truck companies, and what a truck company is, is a ladder truck. Okay, in a ladder truck, what they provide for is search and rescue and a ventilation team, you know, when, in the event you have a structure fire. And of course, the pumper company provides for the water supply, and they have to have the ability to have a hose team and to back up that hose team. And you have to have a pumper driver who also runs the pump. And you also have the ability, one of the firefighters on that fire truck has to stop and catch a fire hydrant as they lay hose into the fire. The pumper companies also run the medical calls, along with the EMS units. And of course, when, in the event of a structure fire, the pumper company, along with the truck companies, and EMS unit, battalion chiefs, you know, support personnel. Now, listed Station 8, that would be that 15th pumper company, and what that represents is the Piper area, and that's a large geographic area. It was determined that that particular pumper had to be staffed with four people daily. But four personnel, because it's a, kind of a long time before that second incoming unit may get there. And so, you have to have four on-duty daily at Station 8 on that pumper, on that 15th pumper. We have three safety officers that are on-duty daily, per, per shift, and those are broken out into three districts, basically, you know, eastern part of the city, the western part, and the southern part of the, of the city, so they can respond to anything from automobile accidents to hazardous material spills, structure fires, and sometimes medical emergencies that are out in the field. And, and an EMS supervisor that has to be on-duty 24/7 in order to supervise all of the EMS activity in the nine-man EMS units that are represented at the bottom of the slide. There are two individuals that are on that each EMS unit daily. One is a paramedic, and one is an EMT. And if you add these numbers together, of course, this is the on-duty daily minimum, 100 personnel, and that is the total for each shift that has to be on-duty daily. Now, that last slide, it said 2013, but it's also currently what the daily minimum is to be on-duty. And this is a snapshot of 2013. This is the actual personnel available to achieve a daily minimum of 100 personnel on First shift was 132, second 129, and third shift 129. A little bit of imbalance, only it can be caused by if someone's bidding across shift, and it usually, it stays within these numbers, and, you know, stays relatively equal across the three shifts. The maximum allowed off that staffing allows is 24. And that's a result of, you know, vacation, you know, that occurs in the level loading, the vacation spread across the calendar throughout the year to have the least amount of impact on staffing. We hold it at 24. If somebody approaches us to use some earned leave, if we're going to exceed that 24, we do deny that, that leave request, because we keep it at the 24. Unscheduled leave average is approximately nine per shift, and what that can include is sick time, injury on duty, FMLA, those types of things as far as unscheduled leave. Now, that, you know, in fact, it is unscheduled, so that average can vary. So, it can be, we can have multiple IODs, which is injury on duty that can occur, where individuals, you know, won't be able to be at work until they're released back to full duty by a doctor. Again, FMLA, and there are multiple things to factor in, the FMLA as far as being used, and that's by federal law. So, you can see that just the normal maximum allowed off, combined with the, the average unscheduled leave, if you need 100 personnel on duty, and in 2013, this is what we had available for personnel in that 24/7 operation, then it gets you down to where, you know, it might cause an issue with some overtime. And off to the right here, so I can quite get that pointer. But the considerations, or any additional unscheduled leave above nine, you know, will decrease the number that's available to achieve that 100 personnel on duty per day. The in-service training that has to take place, because we have certification requirements, and we have to have an amount of suppression and EMS training that occurs both monthly, annually, and we have requirements that are put in place by the state of Kansas that we have to meet also for EMS certification training. So, we have in-service training that we schedule, we try to schedule in the non-peak times to make it the most efficient way to deliver that as possible, to have the least amount of impact. And so, we try to provide for that training in the low-peak periods as far as vacation usage throughout the year. Other things to consider, funeral leave will happen from time to time. Military leave is, is something that we've experienced and something we support our armed forces. So, if somebody has to be on military leave, they're not available to count towards that 100 personnel on duty daily. Now, special events, race weekend, you know, other events, there may be, you know, concerts or something out at the, you know, large venue at Sporting Kansas City or something like that, we might, you know, that has a relatively low impact, but it can affect those numbers by increasing our capacity. I mean, obviously, if you double the, the population of the city, you know, over a weekend, then you might have to have a slight increase in capacity to cover that, so you're not overwhelmed as far as the ability to provide the service for the population you have normally.
Does the race weekend pay you for those services?
I think there's a, one sum that covers that, and that this may, and it may apply towards, you know, the services as far as an increase in the number of ambulances we have on duty for that weekend.
That's correct, chief. What we do is we bill them for any kind of additional hours, work, staffing we do, but from what the chief's demonstrating in total overtime, it's going to cost him overtime, and it's going to show up on that pay chart. We'd receive that money back in a different area, so that's why he's qualifying it, these are things that do cost us.
Right. And so, you know, there's, there's some reimbursement there that may not show up in our numbers. Now, storm staffing, when we had the, the blizzards, I mean, it was predicted, that was something that we knew was coming, and so, you know, a relatively overall small impact on overtime, but it can't affect those numbers. You know, we, we had multiple additional ambulances and some other quick-response vehicles in-service for those events, and it did represent additional personnel that would affect those numbers. Another thing to consider, discipline, you know, that can occur and/or suspension, and if an individual is in that situation, then they're not going to be at work and won't be able to count towards that 100 personnel that needs to be on-duty daily. This is per contract language, minimum staffing, Article 35, under the heading of minimum manning, under suppression. We have 22 companies that will be on-duty daily within that operation, 15 ALS pumper companies, which is the 14 pumbers with three personnel at a minimum, and that's the minimum staffing requirement. And then Fire Station 8, with the, it's the one pumper that has the minimum of four personnel because of the geographic location. And then the truck companies, which are the ladder companies that I described, seven of those, four personnel minimum for a total of 28. So, that's 74 personnel, and then a requirement to have three safety officers on duty. And that's the, per contract language for minimum staffing. Now, of course, on the EMS side, you know, if you have the nine ambulances in-service daily, and they have the two personnel, which is one DUT and one paramedic, and I think it's understood that that represents a minimum, that it has to occur to achieve that operation, and one EMS supervisor on duty for the entire city for those ambulances to be in service. This is a slide that shows factors that affect overtime in regard to minimum staffing. Obviously, vacancies due to retirement, et cetera. If we're carrying a large number of vacancies, then that's, represents individuals that aren't there to have an effect on that 100 daily minimum. And the other is unscheduled leave that I talked about before, FMLA, sick, injury on duty, suspension, funeral leave, et cetera. And at least the unscheduled leave is, is shown, the wording is rather small, but the red line is the unscheduled leave. And if you look at the correlation between the unscheduled leave and the overtime, it's, you can see that there is absolutely, absolutely a correlation between the two. Now, training also has an effect, but like I, I described earlier, if you schedule that in the most efficient way, in the non-peak times, as far as coinciding with peak times for vacation usage, then we try to get that training in earlier in the year, and that's represented by the green line. So, you have a peak in that, and then it drops off, and then it bumps up a little bit in the fall, so that we can get all that in-service training in to meet our requirements. Also, there's specialized, certain amount of specialized training that has to take place. I mean, we have hazardous materials training that has OSHA requirements. We have heavy rescue, technical rescue, within that realm, I mean, there's swift water rescue, there's high-angle rescue, there's confined space rescue, and the technical rescue aspect of it, along with, when I say heavy rescue, I mean, the fire trucks you see that come out with the jaws of life on a highway incident or something like that, it's all the same T. They do all these things within that realm. And also recruit academies, you could have a, a certain amount of, you know, that's considered training, and you might have to get it all done and accomplished, you might have some of the training officers that have to work a little bit of, of overtime, and that can have an effect, but a minimal one. Are there other factors that affect overtime usage? And this is across the fire department, another... And this is across the fire department, another divisions, communications division with the dispatcher staffing. If you have some turnover, or you're in the process of going through a hiring process to remedy that turnover rate, then you could have some overtime associated with that. Or, again, unscheduled leave can impact that also. Shop and the on-call status, obviously, we got to have somebody on-call 24/7 to respond out in the field. We have some aging apparatus, we have some aging apparatus out there that we have some maintenance issues with out in the field, and that has to be remedied out in the field to get them back in service as quickly as possible to keep our standard of coverage within the city. And so, they can perform a lot of these repairs out in the field and get them back in service immediately. In the Division of Fire Prevention, we have some special duty assignments that occur. Obviously, 4th of July is a busy time for them. There are certain fireworks displays that happen throughout the year, special venues, special events as far as concerts, et cetera, that have, there's occupancy requirements that have to be monitored, and so you'll have a certain amount where that can be affected. But that's a, I would consider, minimal amount. Operations, the reason I put that up there is because with the, like, if you have, well, battalion chief, safety officers, EMS supervisor, if you have three safety officers per shift, and you don't have a relief factor built into that, if one of those safety officers is off of vacation or off on unscheduled leave, then you have to move somebody up to ride out of class to fill that position, and then that trickles down, and that could cause an overtime situation. It's because there's not a relief factor built in with additional personnel for those positions. Special assignments, how that impacts overtime or can is that ambulance standby, which is reimbursed, and really, I put that up there too, because that's not factored into, I think, some of the totals that, and I think it took 2013, there was about 35,000 that came back to us in ambulance standby. So that is reimbursed. But some special assignments in regard to tech rescue or deployment, that doesn't happen very often, but it does happen. Greensburg was an example of that, or Joplin, or when we went up to Fort Leavenworth or Atchison for that special assignment in regard to heavy rescue, tech rescue, and deploying our resources to another jurisdiction. Military leave is another one to where an individual can be gone for months at a time, in a couple of cases up to a year, and that individual's not there to affect that minimum staffing level. And then, of course, disciplinary action and/or suspension. In 2013, I think, this slide is a good illustration of where we had 26 recruits that went through the recruit academy. They started July 1 in 2013, but none of these recruits had an effect on staffing in 2013 because they weren't released out into the field until January of 2014. So, they start in July, and they were released in January, and so, and at the same time, the fire department carried 13 to 14 vacancies in 2013, but that recruit class didn't have an effect on that because they weren't released out into the field yet to count against what we needed to staff that 100 daily. Currently, in 2014, we're carrying 14 vacancies, and there are more to come before the end of the year. I think we're predicting that to be 24 to 25 vacancies that will occur by September of 2014. New class of 16 recruits will graduate and be released in December of 2014, and so, the 2014 recruit class will not impact staffing until year-end 2014. So there's kind of a lag with the carrying of vacancies and having the recruits have an effect on that lag, which can impact our daily staffing requirements. This slide illustrates 2013 and 2014 overtime. That class of 26 did graduate, was released out into the field in January and had an impact on overtime. And that was, you can see 2013, the overtime decreased, but the red line indicates 2014. And so, what happened was, you can see that those individuals were released out into the field, and so the overtime decreased, and we're at a level now where we just had a number of retirements, so we're carrying 14 vacancies. I anticipate because of that, and the fact that the vacancies are going to increase, that that red line will increase, there will be an increase in overtime in 2014 from where it's at right now, but it won't reach the levels that it was in 2013 because of the impact on a portion of those that came on in that 2013 class that came out in January. They had an impact on overtime, but as we carry these other vacancies, that will decrease the available staffing to have an effect on that 100 that we have to have there as a daily minimum. As far as out of class, I think this was a good slide to kind of show what that means. Out of class pay, and that's by contract in Article 9 of our labor agreement, when the driver moves to captain, then he has to get the differential in pay. And in a 24-hour period, to ride out as a captain from driver, that represents less than a dollar an hour increase, at $22.48 is the average. The firefighter to captain is a little bit different, but that doesn't happen very often. And the firefighter to driver, which does happen more often, is minimal, and within that 24-hour period, of course, that represents less than a dollar an hour increase. The special duty pay that occurs, and that's by contract in Article 28.5 in our labor agreement, those that are assigned to the hazardous materials unit will get additional $22 to $0.50 a day. And that's not a standalone hazardous materials team, that's in addition to their normal duty assignment. If they're assigned to a pumper or a quint, within the hazmat, there's two different stations that have hazmat teams, then they will get that additional pay, but they are the hazmat team, and they will be available. And in the event that we need to call them back, then they understand that they will be made available then also. Technical rescue specialists, this is at the number-one station, Headquarters, 6 and Armstrong, those that are assigned there, there's a pumper truck, and there's a ladder truck, but in addition to their duties, as far as a pumper company and a ladder company, they're also technical rescue specialists, and they receive the special duty pay for that. But once again, that's in addition to their normal duties as a pumper company and a ladder company. And quite frankly, I think they inspect and ensure the working order of somewhere in the number of 1,000 tools daily in order to effectively be on the ready for that position as a technical rescue specialist. And within that realm, they have the disciplines of heavy rescue, technical rescue, swift water rescue, high-angle rescue, and confined space rescue. And so, it's very technical in nature, requires a tremendous amount of training, and they train constantly. EMS premium pay, this is by contract, Article 28.6, that the EMT assigned to the ambulance unit for the day receives $15 additional, which I think it comes close to about 60 cents an hour. And the MICT receives a premium pay of $30 a day to be on the ambulance for that day. And that's really out-of-class pay, is what's at the top. Special duty is not out-of-class pay, that separate EMS premium pay is not out-of-class pay or considered out-of-class pay. The out-of-class pay, and what that means is if a, when a driver rides out as the captain for the day on the crew, or the firefighter moves up to the driver's position, or a captain rides out as battalion chief, and the other slide, once again, describes what that pay is. And the reason for that is we're a paramilitary organization, these positions have to be maintained 24/7. Somebody moves up and is assuming the responsibility to be in charge of that crew for that day, they receive less than a dollar an hour to do that, and I think that represents the opportunity to train in that position, to be mentored into that position for future promotions. And also, if we didn't do this, I think we'd have to hire about 60 more people as rovers within those positions to cover those positions when those individuals were on schedule or unscheduled leave. And as far as 2010 to 2014 out-of-class pay, it has remained pretty steady since 2010. The spike represents, I think, a time when we had a retirement incentive, there were a lot of tenured firefighters who did retire with rank, and so there was this bump in those that would ride out of title, ride out of class, excuse me, in those positions, until we had, there was a lag until we had a promotional process so that we could promote individuals into those positions as hard-bar captains and drivers and battalion chiefs, so that the, that's where the, once that was accomplished as far as promotional process, then that out-of-class was reduced back to a steady level. Now, that's my last slide. Now, as far as if, I guess, the question about reduction of overtime, the, I guess, if the lag were taken out as far as where the recruit classes have an effect on the vacancies, so that the vacancies, we're carrying vacancies, waiting for the recruit class to be released to have an effect on those vacancies, and within that lag, there will be overtime to achieve the daily minimums, that would have an effect. And I guess, to describe what would have to happen to just, to not have overtime currently, which I wouldn't recommend, but I think it would represent a reduction in services, because what we have shown is what it takes as a minimum, the minimum levels to operate daily, and what has an effect on that. And I think that to eliminate overtime, taking aside the fact that the lag and the filling of the vacancies issue, I think, reducing the overtime to zero would have a net effect of a reduction in services to accomplish that. Now, I will say that the overtime levels for 2014 are not going to be that which they were in 2013 because the net effect of additional personnel within the class that was released in January. But we'll still have an amount of overtime that will occur to achieve those daily minimums that will be exacerbated by, starting out with 14 vacancies now, and we'll have up to 25 vacancies by September, and the recruit class won't be released until December of this year.
Okay. Commissioner Philbrook.
Yes, I just have, chief, I have a couple of clarification questions, if you don't mind. This is going clear back to the beginning of your presentation almost. So, you, I was looking on that, and it said you have 7% unscheduled leave per shift, and about, but you only allow 18% maximum allowed, but that's scheduled? And when I say unscheduled, figures to about 7%, which gives you somewhere, you know, between 25 and 30% off per shift? And so, are you having to schedule in that many more extra people to allow for that number of people that are scheduled off?
Right. I mean, there's, what we do with level loading is the vacation is scheduled throughout the year, we have ranks and individuals picked together to try to spread it out, make it in the most efficient way that we can, so that they don't double up on days that could cause less staffing to be available for that particular day.
I'm just, yeah, I was just trying to kind of balance it out, so if you figure that you have, you're going to be short on the average of that number of people, that you have to have that X number of people available to work?
Right.
Is that correct? Okay. So, now, the other question is, who determines what minimum staff is supposed to be, other than just your numbers that you presently have?
Well, our minimum staffing, I mean, I guess you can say that we operate under our labor agreement contract, though if you were to ask, maybe within the fire service?
Yeah, that, just as, well, overall, because, see, I don't know how you determine what your minimum staff is supposed to be overall for fire department.
Well, you got, there's things that work into that. One of his response time requirements, the other is assembling the correct number of individuals on the scene to effectively fight a structured fire or to respond to medical emergencies. And they're also within the response time realm, you know, you got to have a standard of coverage throughout the city so that you know that with the standard of coverage, that we can meet our response times. Now, if you want to talk about within the fire service, if you were talking a benchmark or a standard that exists, it would be, you could point to NFPA 1710, which would be like the national standards of, and I will say this, the minimum amounts that are represented within the NFPA 1710, NFPA national standards, even within our contract, the minimums that are represented there don't meet the minimums of the national standards.
Do you want to say more about that?
Well, the national standard recommends four personnel per fire truck, whether it be a pumper or a ladder company, as the represented minimum. And of course, we've shown that our minimums are actually below that, so I guess, and it's a fair question as to, okay, how does that, is that established, but I guess that kind of tells us where we're at.
Okay. No, I appreciate the answer. Thank you.
Commissioner McKernan.
Thanks. Chief Jones, I need to understand something here. Did I just hear you say a moment ago that there is no way to staff the fire department without overtime? That's what it sounded like you said, is there's no way to accomplish the goals of the fire department without overtime in the mix?
They, to clarify, what I said was to staff at what we've established as the minimum daily requirements for on-duty to achieve that 100 personnel, that you would not be able to do so without overtime unless, I mean, we have this recruit class that's in a, that won't be released until December, and so, it can't have an effect on those daily minimums. And so, what I'm saying is then it would require overtime to fill those positions because it's exacerbated by the fact that we're out also carrying vacancies, 14 at the present, and that's going to increase with retirements as the year goes on, and in September, it'll probably really reach 25 vacancies before that recruit class is released, which will happen in December.
Okay, so the, you're saying that the lag time between vacancies occurring and the recruit class being available drives overtime in the short run?
Yes. Yes, it has a dramatic impact on overtime, because if you don't have, if you're carrying vacancies, either you don't have the personnel that would have filled those vacancies to have an impact on the daily staffing.
Okay. It, I'm just wondering if there's a way that, through the planning process, that that can be anticipated a little bit better to cut the, to cut the gap down?
In other words, I mean, are you suggesting which would make sense that, you know, we would have to catch up with having a recruit class get released sooner to have an impact on filling the vacancies, and that would have an impact on it? And the other is, you know, we used to have provisional positions that would bridge the gap between recruit classes so that you wouldn't carry as many vacancies.
So recruit classes always fill vacancies, they never come in and add to existing ranks?
No. There's a, we received a SAFER grant last year to be able to hire 16 additional firefighters, but the impact of those 16 additional, you know, really won't occur until we fill these vacancies. And if you're carrying 14 vacancies, you know, that's a negative. And if you're carrying fourteen vacancies, and you have sixty new positions, and that increases to twenty-five by September, then you end up, you're going backwards.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Walker.
Well, to some extent, that has answered the question, I, and one of the questions. You need a class in anticipation of retirements rather than reacting to retirements after the fact. When we put a new class on, from your chart, it looks like, at least at this point in time, not, not this particular one, but overtime's way down. But what I'm expecting then is retirements occur throughout the year, that number's going to go like it has in previous years, maybe lower, but it'll go up and down, up and down, up and down, as you have more vacancies with no firefighters fulfilling. That's correct, right?
Yes.
You know, do you know what the average length of service is of a firefighter?
As far as-
Yeah, I mean, you know, usually the cops are anywhere from twenty-eight to thirty-two years.
That's pretty close.
So when you hire on with your twenty classmates each year, you know that thirty years down the road, give or take, that class is, you know, going to start falling out. So we normally know that the class that was hired thirty years ago this year is probably due to retire, or maybe last year they started, or maybe some will hang on. But the, the groups are generally going to go, not much farther than thirty-two years, unless there's some compelling economic reason. Because you max out, don't you, at about thirty-two years of service?
Right. Depending whether they're in tier one or tier two, but generally speaking, you know, fifty-five and thirty-two, or fifty and thirty-two.
So, one way to reduce overtime would be to bite a bullet and flip a class or a double class, I don't know exactly how to say it, but to flip, instead of, we, we put the retirees on in January, we put the replacements for the retirees that we're expecting over the course of the year. Correct? Something to that effect?
Yes. I mean, we've been, we've done pretty well at predicting when the retirements will occur and how many. I mean, we've been pretty accurate.
Let me ask you another question that I think impacts overall retirement. What about, you know, you, for the many years I've heard that we need four men on a truck to be at minimum manning requirements? Is that essentially correct for your basic truck unit?
As far as, if you're referencing the national standard, which is NFPA seventeen ten, that, that would be correct, and I, and if you're asking me what that's based on, as far as-
No, I, I'm satisfied it's based on probably, you know, I understand that with three men, what three men can do if nobody else shows up, they're, they're, I, I guess the question is, with the requirement in the contract that we always have twenty-two companies, as chief, which would you rather have, four men on a truck or guaranteed twenty-two companies? Because obviously, to have four men on a truck with twenty-two companies, the numbers go up.
Um.
And I would think, from what we've been told, and you were at that meeting, that on occasion, there are areas of the community where data would indicate we don't need a, I guess I, personally, I'd rather see four men on a truck and be safer than have twenty-two companies open every single day, every shift.
That's a difficult question, because, you know, when you-
That's why I'm asking the chief.
Standard of coverage, you bet. You know, we have to consider standard of coverage and response times, and it's one of those where it's almost one you'd consider that are two bad options. And when I say that is, I'd rather have four people in every truck and maintain our standard of coverage with the twenty-two companies, obviously.
Okay.
Now, you know, given where I had no choice, that'd be a difficult one to make.
It was a Hobson's choice, I know.
I, I'd like to, are you-
I'm done.
Thank you. I want to address this. There's a couple of things. Of the hundred people on the three shifts, how many people are required by contract to be resting or sleeping? You have a hundred people on each shift, right? And they're working twenty-four hour shifts, so we have in contract, they have to be sleeping a certain number of hours, right? So is that a hundred people not counting the people who are sleeping, or is that a hundred people including people who are sleeping on shift?
Uh, we have a hundred people on duty.
Yeah.
If they're afforded the ability to get some rest during that time, they try to achieve that, within that twenty-four hours.
But-
There's not a certain amount that's guaranteed, because you may go out and not come back for a while.
Right. But in terms of over a twenty-four hour shift, isn't there a requirement in terms of how many hours of rest in the contract that they're required to have?
No.
So, but we also know, you can't work twenty-four hours straight. Right? I mean, we heard, I mean, we've seen, we've heard from the gentleman that sleep deprivation after seventeen hours is the same as alcohol intoxication. I mean, if someone's up seventeen straight hours working, you lose the quality of service at some point.
Well, you get tired, but you get used to some of that activity, and as far as, I mean, I was in operations for many years, been on the fire department for twenty-seven years, and I think it's, working twenty-four hours within this realm, I think it works. I think it's been proven to work, it's manageable, and although we are the busiest fire department in the state of Kansas, it's still, it works well for us.
The other, the other issue I have is the twenty-two companies, and I'll ask this to Mr. Bach. Mr. Bach, is there any other contract in the, in the unified government that mandates the number of employees that we have to have on shift at any given time?
No, I don't believe we have any other union agreements that speak to that.
Um, I, I think that twenty-two company issue is, is something we need to take serious look at as a commission. When we know statistically that while we have equal staffing, three shifts a day, every day a week, we know we don't have equal calls through that time. And when we have, when we have a fire station maybe that has two companies in it, it would be very plausible, without compromising response time, to be able to take one of those companies out of service in the middle of the night and provide backup with our other groups. I think we need to take a hard look at the twenty-two companies, because I think that's driving cost and does not allow us the flexibility. In every other department, we have the flexibility of staffing down. We don't have the opportunity to staff down when we're mandated by contract, and it's the only contract in the city that mandates the number of companies we run. We have to take a look at that. The other piece with the minimum manning, there's two ways to get minimum manning. There's, you can have people assigned to a truck, or you can have people assigned to the truck when it arrives at a scene. And there's statistical analysis that shows how many fires we actually have and the support that comes from other places. So you might have a pumper that needs four people to actually operate, and we provide minimum manning. We do provide the minimum manning by code, we provide it on scene, just not necessarily in the firehouse. And so I think we need to differentiate when we talk about minimum manning and how many people are operating a truck. On site, when a fire, when a pumper's putting out a fire, you need four people running that truck. That doesn't necessarily mean you need four people in the station waiting for that call to come in. If that fire call comes in, and considering, the vast majority of our calls are EMS ambulance calls, and a fewer percentage are fire calls, it was, it, it makes sense to provide that minimum manning on site, not just on the truck. My biggest question, and this is my biggest beef, chief, and this is something I need an explanation to. In 2006, there was almost zero overtime in the fire department. There was about the same out of class pay, but there was zero overtime. And between 2006 and 2013, that number has climbed to one million dollars a year. And in fact, in 2013, the number for combined out of class and overtime was one point three million. I want to know what changed between 2006 and 2013? The contract has been the same with twenty-two companies. The city has been the same geographic size. How, and, and your staffing overall has gone up. You have more sworn officers than you did in 2006, the same number of companies. How is it that overtime has gone from virtually zero in 2006, gradually on a steady increase to over a million dollars today? Can you give me some insight into that?
Yes. As far as, in 2008, we did bring on an additional ambulance unit, because we didn't have enough capacity in regard to the number of calls we ran and transported as far as patients. So, you know, that's, that represents individuals that had to be on daily. I guess the other is that there were times where, you know, maybe we were running our fire trucks at a level that, you know, with three individuals on truck companies, I think we saw that the contract states that four individuals will be on there daily.
Did, did the contract change between '06 and 2013?
In some areas, yes. In that particular area, I'd have to take another look at it, but-
Is the difference in the staffing on a truck, as I described, you can either have it in the house, or you can have it on scene? Is that, is that an alternative?
I'm not sure I understand.
Is, you need four people to run a truck. You can either have four people waiting at the firehouse for a fire call, or you can have three people waiting to drive the truck there, and have a fourth person arrive on scene from another company that could provide support. So the minimum manning can be accomplished either way. So my question is, is there a philosophical change in terms of how we're staffing from '06 to 2013?
It's a standard of coverage issue, because if you're trying to achieve having the same number of people by increasing the number of companies that respond to that particular fire, then you're creating a standard of coverage issue elsewhere when that occurs. An issue would be yesterday when we had the Deffin Ball fire, there were thirteen fire trucks on that scene, and just on that scene. And if you look at the number of fire trucks we talked about that we have, as far as our standard of coverage and capacity, then, you know, that can create issues.
But how, how has it gone up a million dollars from zero to a million? I, that's a lot. I mean, I, how's that, how's that happened in the last nine years?
As far as what I've shown, it's pretty straightforward, as far as with a minimum necessary, on duty daily to achieve our goal to, to comply with the contract language, one, but to also serve our citizens, because what I've represented, I think, based on the question that was asked on, what, you know, referencing the national standard is, you know, what I'm talking about, you know, doesn't meet that standard, it's below that standard. I'm talking about at a minimum level. Now, what I also said is, is to eliminate overtime in that regard, would, in effect, which I don't recommend, be a reduction in service.
But can we go back? Were we less safe in 2011 when it was five hundred thousand dollars? I mean, even in 2011, it was half this.
That's because we graduated a class of, I believe, forty-four individuals, and had an impact on, on overtime. Would reduce the level of vacancies that occurred at that time. We were carrying quite a few vacancies.
Right. But it was over a million the year before that, so it cut it, that cut it in half. But now it's gone up and doubled again. I, I'd like to see an immediate reduction in this overtime in the department. I think it's a, I think there's, there's a way to do that, and I, I mean, if you look at the fire department, it's spread pretty evenly. The captains average a three point six percent increase, the drivers average three point six percent increase over base pay, firefighters four point five percent, dispatch almost six percent. I mean, the department receives about three point eight percent over base pay, on average, with overtime and out of class pay, where we haven't been able to give a cost of living increase to our other employees. And just a few years ago, it was literally at zero. And so I just want to know what changed from '06 to 2014 that we're paying a million dollars? When, were we less safe in '06 and '07? I don't know. I mean, was there incidents that happened where we weren't safe?
Well, I can, you know, that's a, that's a tough question when you say this. Was there something that happened? Or can we say, is there something that didn't happen based on, you know, us operating at the minimum levels we're doing now, for the daily minimum that we've outlined? I know, I can point to a particular fire that, to where, you know, it was obvious to us, we happened to have four individuals on almost every truck that was on the scene of a fire, Fourteenth and Central, where we, I think we evacuated thirty individuals from that apartment house. And as we got the last couple of people out the door, onto, onto the sidewalk, the middle of the building collapsed. And so we, we kind of looked at each other and said, the timed a task to accomplish that goal, if we didn't have the extra, not extra, if we didn't have the adequate people that day to accomplish that goal, that collapse would have happened, and we wouldn't have had all of the individuals out of the structure. So it's kind of a tough question, what happened that, you know, shouldn't have happened, or what if we prevented it from happening that we really can't qualify?
Okay. Any other questions? Yes. Commissioner Kane.
Thank you.
By the way, we're slated for a seven o'clock. If you have come to the meeting for the seven o'clock, or you've tuned in on TV for the seven o'clock, we're running over our five o'clock special session on overtime for public safety. We will conclude the fire presentation, begin our seven o'clock, started a little bit late, and then we will come back to our last presentation after that. So, Commissioner Kane.
Chief, you do a good job. You do a great job. You have some outstanding people working for you.
Thank you.
And I don't want anybody, whether it be the fire personnel for somebody's house, to be at risk. You know, you've been beat down the last couple of months on somebody saying, we don't have this people here, we don't have that people there. And what this looks like to me is a political ploy, because the fire union didn't support the current mayor.
Point of order, man.
This is a point of order.
That's a personal attack that's unqual, unwanted.
Well, I'm telling you, that's, you can be a person, you can call it whatever you want. This is what it looked like to me, you've done it the last couple of months.
All right. You know what? We're not taking personal attacks right now. Point of order. If you have a statement to make-
You do a good job. I want every single person on the department to be safe, every single person in the community to be safe. And if you can't do it with not the twenty-two units or whatever the housing it is, then you just keep doing it, because if we can eliminate the, the monies, you would have done it. It's not your fault we didn't fill the class. But I also don't think you need to take the heat for it either.
Commissioner Philbrook.
All righty then. So, I do have a couple of questions, chief, if you don't mind. What did you say, and I know you've told us before in other presentations, what the national response time is, the average response time? What was that?
As far as the NFPA seventeen ten, established minimum response time or desired response time is four minutes.
That's what, that's what the national is?
That would be for first unit on the scene.
Okay, okay. And what is ours?
Three minutes and forty-four seconds.
Okay. And so, and I know this might sound kind of strange, but, but I know that when I was living way out in the tulips, it made a big difference how long response time was on how much my insurance was. And so I don't, does our response time here of that half a minute or so, does that make a big difference on the insurances around here, or do you have any idea?
Well, the ISO ratings can have an effect on that, and yes, that can play into the formula that they use. Our ISO rating was reduced from a, from a four to a three here. They were, ISO's been about a year with us, and what factors into that-
What's ISO, sir? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. It's insurance services organization.
Thank you.
They're a, a group that rates cities based on their capabilities in regard to their fire service, water supply, and there's communications component to that as far as our dispatch center. And with that, that's how they score you.
So a four is better or worse? I don't know how the scale works.
And excuse me, that, that would go one through ten.
Okay. And what's the best?
The lower number being the better score than the higher.
So you went from a four to a three, then?
Went from a four to a three was a positive thing.
Okay.
They did indicate that the, the fact that we received a SAFER grant, when they were, right before they were here, and increased our staffing level, it was commented that had that not occurred, we may have stated a four.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Appreciate your answer.
Sure.
Commissioner Walker.
Well, chief, I, so, chief, I, my, my point to you, and I concur with what Mike said. I've, I've known you both as a fellow staff member and now sitting as a commissioner. I have never had any qualms about your capacity or your ability. I think you are well aware of our financial difficulties- I think you are well aware of our financial difficulties and, uh, the obvious, uh, trending for the next couple of years at least. So we're looking for every dollar we can save. Now, I want to say, and I've, you know, never had the opportunity when I was staff because the company line was a difference. I think it is extremely important to have four firemen on the truck. In fact, I think it's more important to have four men on the truck. And I realize that there may be occasions where I would eat those words. But, and I realize it's also a matter of labor negotiations, but, you know, if we lose a minute here or there, you know, we, you have to make decisions. The safety of the men and their ability to perform that job, uh, is extremely important. But I also realize with 22 companies open every day, we are just not going to be able to meet that goal. I don't see any financial resources where that can become a reality. And, uh, so, yeah, my, my point was that if you had the flexibility based on data, statistics, uh, the situation in other firehouses, to close firehouses at certain times and not have companies present, but you had with that the ability to have four men on every truck, or whatever the minimum is for that particular type of truck, I'd almost say the trade's worthwhile. Now, I'm not a fireman and I'm, I'm just going with gut instincts. So I'm looking for a way to save the overtime too. But if we could do it with some of those companies closed, you know, four men on the truck, I just, something tells me we could do that and, and accomplish all the, all the goals. Now, you know, I've laid it out there and we can't solve it here tonight because of all the, but I'd certainly like to have a response from you at some point as to why that would either work or not work.
Sure, and there's two short comments. One, uh, the comment about the, us understanding, you know, the finances and the difficulties throughout the, uh, over the last four, five, six years. Uh, over the last four years, the fire department, uh, we really committed ourselves to pursuing avenues to achieve grant funding. Uh, we became pretty good grant writers. We've, uh, achieved approximately $5.3 million that has come into the fire department through those efforts over the last four years, and, uh, and I just thought it might, you know, we might note that. The other is the standard of coverage issue where the problem with, uh, I heard it stated, when you talk about peak and non-peak times of coverage, is you have a scheduling issue. It's, uh, I had a, an old fire chief tell me, and I asked him, what do you mean by that? And he said, you can't schedule when the emergencies happen. So it, it, it represents, to me, a considerable risk. If you understand that you say, okay, this is what it takes for a standard of coverage and a minimum, and then you go against that, what you've established as a, a minimum, to flex that or have some sort of a peak, non-peak type situation. You know, you, you probably will achieve as cost savings. But if you happen to be that individual that has a fire or a heart attack during the non-peak time, I think that you would consider it money well spent if the standard of coverage remained intact.
I would agree, there are no easy answers. Thank you.
Commissioner McKernan.
Thanks. Chief Jones, I'm, I'm, I'm back where I was originally. If one of the big drivers of the overtime is the lag, the gap between, uh, the fact that we have unfilled positions after there is attrition, there is retirement, there are people leaving their jobs, and the new class isn't there yet. So we've got overtime in the middle to fill, to plug the hole, to fill the gap. If hypothetically, if there were more frequent classes or more numerous, uh, recruits in each class, and if we actually drove a little bit of intentional overlap so that there was an actual overlap rather than a gap, would that result in a net savings, saving the overtime? I mean, still paying more salary than we're paying now, but saving on overtime? Hypothetically, would that drive a, a net savings of, of salary?
Absolutely would, yes.
Thank you, sir.
All right, I don't see any other questions. I do want to reiterate, and I've said this to you, chief, a number of places, I do think you do an outstanding job, and I think our fire department does an outstanding job. We have the best public safety in the world. I have said that repeatedly, and we need to continue to protect it. The challenge we have is on average, it's gone up over 35%. We just can't sustain that trajectory. We've got to find ways to ratchet down the costs of our public safety. And so I think we need to put everything on the table, and I think we need to think through, um, all of the different levels. So I do appreciate the work you're doing, I've said that repeatedly, and I do appreciate the work of a fire department. I've said that repeatedly. We have got to find a way to get our costs to a point where they're sustainable long-term because we cannot continue to project out the numbers that we have. So I appreciate your taking the time to put this together. And, um, if there are no further questions, then we will, um, uh, take a recess from the special session. We will need 10 minutes to turn the recording device, and we will begin our 7 o'clock at 7:25. Thank you.
One more thing, I just wanted to, again, like Sheriff Ash, I wanted to thank, uh, the hard work from my staff and some of the UG staff that, uh, put in a lot of hard work to, uh, to produce some very good numbers. Thank you.
Thank you.